We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Call to order this meeting of the Montague County Commission for December 16, 2020. All commissioners are present, and we will begin with consent and approval. Good morning, Renetta.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have nine exonerations for $1,499.93, vouchers, general county fund, $345,057.59, coal severance, $10,029.19, 911, $235.93, Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,025.51, Mason Dixon Park, $9,1473, transportation levy, $32,348.69, library levy, $7,0939.34, assessors valuation, $6,874.05, Morgantown Industrial, TIF, $28,464.70, purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, $6,094.71, home confinement, $5,165.68, Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,008.54, Mason Dixon Park, $193.22, for a voucher total of $448,306.88. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals. Oh, I'm sorry. We got to take that one off. It was just habit. The Mon County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Abandoning Dilapidated Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Region Six Planning Development Council, Historic Landmarks Commission, Mountain Trail Network Authority, for district orders for December 16, 2020.
Move for approval? Second? And promptly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Introduction of new employees and personnel changes.
I don't believe we have any.
We will now then go to comments from the public. If you wish to speak, you may come forward. Please identify yourself, name and address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak to us by public comment. Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Natalie Stone, and I'm the executive director for the North Central Building Trades Council. We are here this morning to speak in favor of the pilot agreement that you guys are going to be looking at here in a little bit for the Longview Power Project. It's going to support the community, it's going to employ local workers, it's going to give people a livable wage, and in this state of our economy right now in this county, it's a huge win for everyone, so we ask for your approval on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I have a pretty copy of it.
Sure.
May I present this to you? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Very much. Good morning.
Morning. How are you doing?
Thank you very much. My name and address is at the bottom. Dwayne Nichols, live in Stewartstown section of Morgantown. With regard to agenda item C, the project there, the process is too important to just let it pass without public input, so this outlines the need for time to consider and the public comment process. The name, Morgantown, relevant here on item two, the Mountain State Clean Energy is misleading because of the word "clean," as is explained there. Then on items four and five of the facilities development agreement, there appears to be a problem with the deed being held by the power company because that then will not qualify them for this ad valorem tax abatement. And further, if there is a bankruptcy, the fact that the power company is holding the deed, that becomes problematic and in the hands of the bankruptcy court. So that puts our county at risk. And finally, it's possible this agreement may be declared unconstitutional or illegal as explained in a document that I presented to this court yesterday, brought it in, and a law review article, I hope that you found that. So finally, let me say that just today, in the Morgantown Dominion Post, today in the Charleston Gazette, there's an extensive in-depth article about power plants and choosing what is appropriate for West Virginia at this time. It's an article based on a report from the Center for Energy and Sustained Development at West Virginia University. And so it's available now on the internet as indicated here. I'm afraid I'm running out of time.
We've got a minute.
I'm appealing, though, that people like me, people like my previous speaker, would have a chance to analyze and discuss so that rushing to judgment is in nobody's interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have also been heard of issues, and I will not have time to adjust any of those.
My name is James Coats, and I serve as the conservation chair for the Western Chapter of Sierra Club. I reside at 414 Tyron Avery Road in Morgantown. We feared the worst, and it was worse than we feared. Longview announced their plans for to open a megawatt gas-fired power plant in January of 2019. In March, we approached this commission and identified a number of issues that we wanted to make sure were addressed in any pilot. At that time, you assured us you hadn't been contacted by Longview yet, and that, of course, there'd be an opportunity to review these types of things in public. In January of this year, I attended a meeting of the Mon County Board of Education that was supposed to be discussing this pilot agreement, but they immediately went into closed session. And at the next Mon County Commission meeting, I raised my concerns about that and the extensive amount of secrecy that has gone on with this, and you may remember that because several people became quite agitated during that meeting. We met with you in a work session in August, and you once again assured us that there would be plenty of time to review these documents in public before any vote was taken. In November of this year, without any public notice, Longview changed their name, and last week's agenda contained that new name with no mention of the word "Longview" that anybody in the public knew about. Last night, one Sierra Club member contacted me indicating that at least one commissioner has already made up their mind and has no intention of listening to any public comment. They're going to vote for this regardless of what is said here today. I'm calling for a 30-day public comment period on this before any vote is taken. If this commission, after 18 months of secret meetings, is unwilling to give 30 days for the public to review and comment on this, you certainly cannot claim transparency, and you will justify our worst fears. I've spent only a few hours reviewing these documents. I've already found at least one direct violation of state law and one provision that is in contradiction to the Public Service Commission's citing order. I fear that these documents are unsound legally, financially irresponsible, and I urge that this commission face these facts, do not ignore them in your rush to judgment. The rest of this document contains a long list of various best practices, recommendations, documents we've submitted in the past, et cetera, as well as some documentation of some of the flaws that I've found. I again urge, please, give us a chance to talk about this before you vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next.
My name is Benji Swanson. I live at 4536 Mason Dixon Road, Core, West Virginia. I represent about 600 ironworkers who live here in the region, working on projects such as Ruby Hospital and the Business and Economics Building downtown here. As we know, Mylan is shutting up here in about six months. There are going to be 1,500 jobs potentially lost. With a super project like a gas-fired powerhouse, the trades have the potential to put some of those 1,500 to work, working on this powerhouse next year if it will go through. Now, as the gentleman before me spoke about some of the legal problems in this project in this paperwork, that may be so. There are some legweeze wording that needs change, so be it, but to wait one day longer before we pass this, I think would be foolish to put in jeopardy this project because we're waiting 30 days. I've been to four or five meetings over the last year, year and a half, discussing this. All of my questions have been answered, and I think it would be detrimental to this county to lose this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Anyone else?
My name's Matthew Kennedy. I live at 25513 Mountaineer Highway, Littleton, West Virginia. I'm assistant business manager of Boilermakers Local 667. I represent a little over 500 members and have several phone calls every day asking if this project is moving forward. Also took in 30 new apprentices this month to help man these new jobs that are coming up. So my membership is very excited and can't wait to see new projects where they can stay at home and not have to travel the road and work for a year to two years and sleep in their own bed and spend time with their families. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Steve Nelson. I live at 1220 Lyons Avenue here in Morgantown. I'm the CEO of Mountain State Energy Holdings, as well as Mountain State Clean Energy, as well as Longview Power. This project that we have in front of us represents a significant improvement in power generation in the PJM grid. It will emit far less emissions than coal units, something in the order of 57% lower emissions. It's very cost-effective, round-the-clock power with greater efficiency than the average coal unit, 47% better efficiency. New CCGTs are partial to fully hydrogen-capable, the ones that we're going to install. They're advanced-class gas turbines. That means they're very efficient, and the fact that they're fully capable of burning hydrogen means that we're set to have a much cleaner, lower-carbon impact as time goes by with this new facility. It's affordable power with local resources, creating and retaining local jobs with equipment made in America. The solar facility, our 70 megawatts of solar, will be built. We are currently looking at additional capacity also. Mountain State is committed to viable and practical, all the above strategy, to actually, physically make forward progress to achieve improving environmental compliance and be economically viable for the community and a realistic greener future. This is our path to building sustained value for our company. I'd like to take and mention a little bit about this agreement. I would like to thank you, the commission, and those involved for the hard work to get to move this forward. It's a viable and legal document, it has been well-vetted, and it is suitable to execute. So I'm looking forward to signing this today. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Eric Carlson with the Morgantown Area Partnership, 265 Spruce Street. We would like to express our excitement about this pilot agreement that is being suggested for today. Russ Rogerson with the partnership unfortunately is not able to be here at this moment, but he is very grateful as well of the work that this body, when Mountain State Energy, the Board of Education, and others have done to bring this to fruition. I know from my background, being on the government side in other communities, how difficult it can be to get a payment in lieu of taxes. So for this to come to pass, for not only the investment in the community that we're seeing from the expansion at the facility, but to then be adding this on top of it, truly is something that is rare in governmental entities to be able to achieve. So congratulations and thank you very much. We at the partnership are excited about this prospect.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else? Okay.
I represent the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local in Morgantown, West Virginia.
Your name, sir?
Brian Rayber. I'm a lifelong resident of Mon County. I live 1638 Jakes Run Road, Fairview. We are in full support of this project. I'm also a small business owner in the Western in Montague County. And with the closing of Mylan, it makes small businesses harder to operate. So with these kind of projects and the construction workers that will be coming through, we hope that that will help our small business as well as the other trades as well. So appreciate you guys' support and all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close comments from the public and thank you all for responding. Talene, do we have grants?
I have, if you recall, a few months back, the Day Report Center applied for the SEEP grant. They were awarded that. They were awarded $65,000, so I have that grant contract treaty signed. I also have requests for reimbursements. The first one is for the VOCA grant in the amount of $7,723.83. The next one is the Governor's Highway Safety Program, impaired driving, $923.04. Click-It-Or-Ticket in the amount of $1,232.23, and Save Communities in the amount of $458.26.
Move to approve grants as presented?
Second.
And promptly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We next have the opening response for Notice of Bid Number 2020 MCC-CM001. And I believe we did.
Oh, good.
Go ahead and let you open it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Okay. So we have one response? We have one response. That is from Aquapool, 1438 Electric Avenue. That is East Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Double sealed here.
As Commissioner Hawkins is opening that, I just want to clarify that we're acknowledging the responses. There should be a both a technical and cost offer in there. So you should see two envelopes, hopefully.
Hopefully. I don't know if I can get enough noise to pick up on the mic.
Yes, there are two envelopes. Okay.
So we do have to, we won't open those now. What I would like to do is I'd like to move that we refer the technical proposals for review and evaluation by commission staff.
Second.
And promptly moved in second for review. All in favor?
Aye.
And then what we'll do then is we'll do the technical evaluation. We'll bring that back to the commission, and at a future meeting then we'll open up the cost evaluations, and then we'll hopefully arrive at a successful offer.
Sixth.
Thank you. All right. Correspondence. Do we have correspondence?
I have none, sir.
I do have some correspondence I want to note. This correspondence is all in regards to what people have been talking about in the public comment section. They're all in regards to the Mountain State Clean Energy LLC and the Mountain State Renewable Energy LLC. I had an email from, we had an email from James Cotton with Sierra Club asking for the agreements and taking issue with Mountain State's name. Mary Wildfire from Spencer, West Virginia, she's worried that the agreement will lead to a breakdown in society overrun with Ward Lord-led gangs. Dwayne Nichols, concern about Mountain State's name, wanting public hearings and wanting more time to study decisions that were already made by Public Service Commission. Paula Hunt, wanting more time. Betsy Lawson, wanting more time. Steve Lawson mentioned something about a 300-character muscling of input to our supposed representatives via the commission, which tells its own story. I'm not really sure what he's talking about. We don't put a limit on responses to our web portal.
Yeah, I think there's.
It's a 300-character, though.
Character, yeah.
Okay. Well, he was able to send me an email, so obviously there's not a limit in communication. So I do want to note those for the record because those individuals did send us emails. I believe we probably all got the same emails.
Yeah. Just for clarification, since it was brought up, I am the individual, my commissioners know that I try and respond to each, and sometimes I try and give too much information, but I want to read exactly into the record what I said since I'm being accused of something. I went to Paula Hunt. I said, "Thank you for your email, but this issue has been dealt with at the state level several months ago. The commission has been working on this issue for 18 months, and I am looking forward to signing an agreement on Wednesday." That was my exact quote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other correspondence? Hearing none, we'll move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Okay. First, consideration of requisition number 48 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Requisition is for $487,074.3. That is for sales tax that was generated in the district in the month of November, and those funds will be transferred to United Bank as a trustee to pay on bonds.
Move to approve requisition 48 as presented?
Second.
And promptly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
And I want to note that this is the regular deposit less the $100,000 statutory lien and administration fees.
To consider approval of an appointment to the Mountain Line Transit Authority.
Mr. Ron Bain has served for many years on the Transit Authority. He is asking to be reappointed.
Okay. Good.
So moved.
Sorry. Go ahead, Tom.
I so move.
Properly moved in second to reappoint Ron to this board. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, to consider for approval documents related to Mountain State Clean Energy LLC and Mountain State Renewable LLC.
Move to approve facility development agreements, payment in lieu of taxes agreements, and lease payments as presented with discussion.
Second.
Okay.
I want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking today, though the commission has, has spent a lot of time on this. We've been completely transparent in everything we're doing because we've been, we note every time we're meeting, unfortunately, you can't develop complex legal documents, lease documents by committee. We have a gaggle of attorneys, Tom Rubenstein from Dinsmore &amp; Scholl, his counterpart, Chris Pleben. We have our, the Longview attorneys, Chris Callis. We've had the Board of Education's attorney, Carrie Cecil. I mean, these documents have been thoroughly vetted. Some things that are mentioned are not actually true. The property will be deeded to the county. Correct, Mr. Rubenstein? So again, we do listen, we do pay attention. Mr. Nichols, you know, we've afforded you every opportunity. When you've come and talked to us, we've certainly let you speak every time, and we've talked to you and listened to you. So your comments don't fall on deaf ears, and there's been a lot of improvements in this, in this agreement at the PSC level and at our level based on comments. So we do listen. Unfortunately, a lot of the things that are constantly being argued were things that the Public Service Commission already decided. Our charge is to approve these lease documents, the pilot, these pilot agreements and the facilities development agreements. And I think we've done that, and we've done a good job on that. Just these particular agreements in comparison with the previous agreements will allow a lot more of these dollars to actually be spent here in Mon County. 98 point, about 98% of these dollars will stay here in Mon County as opposed to the other agreement, where only 69% stays here in Mon County. So I think this is a good thing for all of Mon County. I think it's a good thing for economic development, and I'm completely steadfast in my resolve to move forward.
I appreciate your comments, and I agree. Many of the concerns that continually keep coming up are from, we're vetted at the PSC hearings, the meetings, those were all public, all the documentation was permitted, and they made the decision, not us. What we have before us is the possibility of new growth for Montague County, and it becomes very difficult because when we hear the arguments, first, this county commission was accused of causing emissions because of the Fort Martin Plant. So you had that. Now, we're getting told that we may be knocking down the Fort Martin Plant and people losing their jobs. You can't have both arguments to swing your mood at that time. We have been consistent, and by the show of the individuals who are here representing, whether it be tradesmen, union workers, or construction workers, we're thrilled that they are here. We are, we take this very seriously, and in light of what's going on with Mylan and possible other changes in this county, we are trying to not rest on our laurels, and I will respond finally with the one comment that was sent to me, that the community will see just a little benefit of a little, small amount of money, as was stated to me. And to Mary, I will say $60.5 million is not a small amount of money. Thank you.
And I do want to, the point of Fort Martin was brought up a lot.
Yes.
Fort Martin's a 51-year-old plant.
Right.
First Energy just announced a while back that they're going to be carbon neutral by 2050, so it's.
It's going to go out.
It's apparent that that plant may be closed down. We're trying to be proactive. We're not waiting to see what will happen. Obviously, that will affect this county, so are we supposed to stop everything because of something that may happen by 2050? We're just trying to be proactive and move forward. So we weigh all those options, and we've, it's, it's, it sounds funny, you know, of this being accused of being rushed because we've been living this for two years, and we've been sweating all those details. The last thing I want to say is in regards to what we had intended in regards to making things completely available to the public, we didn't think, with COVID, it really took a lot of the attention of the school board, and it took a long time to negotiate. That was the one document the school board had to sign, and to get that off the table was later than we expected. But we had, we have a deadline to really, we self-imposed a deadline in order to allow the financing and everything to work, and I appreciate Mr. Nelson, your guys.
Allowing us.
Allowing us to push the limits out this long, but as a couple of speakers said, we can't wait, we can't wait any longer. We vetted all these things. We need to move forward. We did, again, we could have brought the agreements up and approved them, but we did make them available. We've been perfectly transparent in regards to what we're doing, but we didn't really have the documents finalized till last week when the Board of Education approved them. So we had to make sure that they were going to approve them before we moved forward. So again, I just think that we've, we've discussed this enough, and I'm ready to move forward.
With that being said, I want to thank everybody. It has been two years. I'm proud to call for the vote on this right now. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, consideration of a collaboration resolution between Montague County Commission and the Montague County Board of Education.
Renetta, would you read the resolution, please?
Be resolved this 16th day of December, 2020. That with sincere appreciation to the Montague County Board of Education and the sheriff of Montague County, the assessor of Montague County, Mountain State Clean Energy LLC and Mountain State Renewables LLC, we are pleased to approve the necessary agreements to implement the respective proposed development projects being undertaken by the Longview parties, which projects were the subject of that certain September 11, 2019 term sheet. Those necessary agreements include the pilot agreements, the facility development agreements, the lease agreements, and the deeds associated therewith, as well as any other documents and agreements required and deemed necessary for the financing, closing, and construction of the development project. Be it further resolved that the commission, as part of the strong spirit of cooperation with the MCBOE, sheriff, and assessor, and a focus on the benefits to Montague County and its citizens, which will result from the desired success of the development projects, intends to allocate a material portion of any lease payments it may receive from the development projects to a vehicle that will seek to ensure that the MCBOE development projects to a vehicle that will seek to ensure that the MCBOE needs and projects receive all due consideration for the use of such funds. All legally appropriate vehicles shall be explored and discussed for these purposes, such that the MCBOE has a significant voice in any ultimate choices, passed and adopted by the County Commission of Montague County, State of West Virginia, the 16th day of December 2020.
Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved and second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
And this is the most extraordinary part of this whole agreement, is the work that the citizens should see between these two entities, to work to keep those dollars, and both of us to agree to work together to the benefit of all the citizens to keep those dollars here. So it may, it may just be a hollow resolution, some, you know, critics may say, but we are serious about this effort, and again, the citizens ought to take note that, you know, two organizations are putting aside their own organizational goals to work together for the betterment of all of our citizens.
Thank you. Reports from elected officials. Mr. Statler?
Good morning, and thank you, Joe Statler. I got a couple of issues. First, I want to congratulate this commission for the fine work that you've done. I believe you've done the best utilizing all the tools that you had in your tool chest to bring forward a proposal and a project that's going to benefit all the citizens of Montague County. I know there's a lot of issues in it, and I won't go over rehashing them, but I will tell you, the short term, the construction jobs that's being, going to be created by this project, long term, the jobs that's going to be created by this project, and looking at everything moving forward, the money that will be able to stay in this county to, I hope to do some work, and I know it will do, that will benefit everybody in the county. So again, kudos, and thank you to the commission for doing this work. The second reason here, I'm getting several inquiries about the Catherine Knob Tower on the western end of Montague County. It is disrupting the cell system, although they put a temporary tower up. The temporary tower doesn't have the reach out that the tower had in place, and I simply need to know, I know I can't get the date that it's going to be finished, I wish I could, and I know that's not possible, but at some point, I really would like to know what dates we're looking at, so I can share this with the community out there. There's some that's going out because they're working at home, as a lot are. We have the students out there that's needing to use it for schoolwork. We got the buses that's out there with the units on it. Some of the parents are resorting to buying 600, and I think it's 80-some-dollar booster that they're buying to help to get their internet system in. We really have to work on this. The one thing that we have to do, and I'm going to put a lot of attention to it, going to Charleston, is going to be looking at, you know, the areas that need broadband enhancement, the underserved and the non-served, and we have a lot of it on the western end of the county. And I'm asking you guys to work in that area. I know, you know, we can use enhancements everywhere, but we truly need that system out on the western end, and one thing it will help is, we have a lot of people that are staying at home, working now, and we know the students are at home, trying to do school. So those are the questions I put before you, and hope you guys will consider moving forward and doing everything within your power that we can do to work together, that we can enhance the broadband on the western end, and a lot of the other areas in Montague County that are not served and underserved. Thank you very much.
Jim, would you care to elucidate on that? I mean, I know we have some updates.
Yeah, Jim gave us an update last week, but if you could, for Delegate Statler's purpose, could you kind of maybe give us an update on the project? And again, if there's a loose timeline for that tower to be.
And I must say, we did this on an emergency basis. In other words, it's being done with all haste that we can on this end.
Right now, the, they're finishing up the engineering studies. We're hoping to have the cores drilled and filled with the concrete by the end of this year, if that all moves forward in the way we're looking at, and weather continues to cooperate with us. We have been able to obtain a tower already. The, our contractors have shifted a tower that they had already had ordered and is sending it to us. So right now, we are looking at the end of February, 1st of March, to having the tower up. Once the tower is up, US Cellular, their shelter is still on that location, so it was never moved, their equipment is still there, so I don't see it taking a long time to get the US Cellular equipment back up onto the tower. I just communicated with Mr. Hunter from US Cellular yesterday, and we gave them the area within the tower where US Cellular would be located. They're at the 300 to 320-foot range. Our antennas will be at the very top of the tower at the 340. So everything is continuing to move forward with this project, but the best that we're looking at right now is the end of February, 1st of March, to having the tower up and operational.
Question, because obviously, the old tower was, what, 480 feet?
Yes, sir.
And the new one is?
340.
Will that make a difference in service, for cellular service?
Right now, where US Cellular is located, where they moved temporarily, they're actually 300 foot lower on ground elevation than what we are at our tower site. So you come up 300 feet from where they're at, and then you add another 300 to 320. They were, I think on the old tower, they were around the 420-foot mark, and I don't have my paperwork with me. So yes, they will be dropping down about 100 feet with coverage out in that area, but they are in the process now of doing their prop studies to evaluate and see what kind of coverage they will have moving forward once they're at our 300, 320-foot range. But I don't see it, I don't see it really hurting their coverage area from what they had. Matter of fact, we have found with our prop studies that our radios is actually going to pick up better coverage in the area going from 480 down to 340, because we were actually overshooting some areas. So we're hoping that US Cellular has the same luck in their prop studies that they see once they get back onto this tower, that they have just as good, if not better, service than they had prior to.
So is it height that is the ultimate, what decides service, or as they, as they put new equipment? Because if people don't realize, we had to drop the old tower, we couldn't even take the equipment off it. So could the new equipment being, you know, more modern and more efficient add some of that?
They actually, you know, US Cellular was actually contacting us about going up onto the old tower and replacing the old equipment they had on it at the time. They were going to upgrade their equipment, so I would assume that when they put the equipment back on the tire this time, they will have the most up-to-date and latest equipment that they have available to them. And every time it seems like you see that upgrade to that equipment, the coverage and service seems to increase for those folks.
And if I could also refer to the other question you asked Delegate Statler, there is a committee that Sean-
Yeah, I was going to speak to that.
Okay, okay, we'll talk about that, too, because that is also really another good point. But I can say that we met this morning with Green County, and they just got a grant of multimillion dollars to work on the broadband directly right next to the, our line. So it's just one more thing that we're going to try and work to get on, but go ahead.
And Delegate Statler, so you can pass on to the folks out that way. When I came to the commission with building this new tower, one of the things that we decided, and the commission decided, was that we were going to replace the tower with a self-supporting solid-leg structure, and these structures are much more sturdy and can take a lot more onto the tower. So this tower has been designed and being built so that in the future, if broadband starts coming this way, we will be able to add broadband onto this tower site.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
I just wanted to take a moment here, because I haven't had a chance to come down, but I want to direct this towards Commissioner Hawkins. Just want to take the opportunity to thank you for your willingness to work with our office. Our staff wanted me to pass along, too, especially through our appraisal staff, through the BREs. Just being there, listening to us on that, and working with us, no matter the outcome of it. It's, you know, as a professional thing and that, but I wanted to make sure that I had the opportunity to come down to thank you. That office will miss you, but we've appreciated everything you've done for us. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Are there any other reports from elected officials? We will now go to reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yes, first, and I am serious, I do want to thank everyone for showing up before the snowstorm, because this is an important issue, and it was an important issue concerning the new coal, what coal, there's a slip, new gas and solar plant. And I want to say exactly to the owners, Phil, that they've worked very hard with us. We started at polar opposites, but we all agreed that we wanted this project, and I think it was a win-win. And again, I also want to thank, you know, everyone who pulled this all together, because it wasn't easy. We worked many hours, early and late. With that being said, on the negative side, it's unfortunate that we are losing 1,500 great employees from Mylan. Immediately, I really want to thank my colleagues over next to me, because we immediately jumped on it. We didn't sit back and wait. We've been working 24 hours, getting the information, and I think that's the key, that I think we had our first meeting that Russ Rogerson organized and was the chairperson of, and what we came out of that was, the most important issue is, before we move forward and make decisions, we need to know the facts, and we need to know exactly who the individuals are, what we're losing, what skill, job skills we need, and then how to move forward to help them. And that's what really came out of that meeting, and it was a great eclectic group of individuals. Saying that, I apologize, but the phone call I just got was from Senator Manchin, who just said that he is planning to be a part of, we're having another meeting on Friday of all elected officials, to discuss what, quote, "possible options and government funding" that we could possibly do, whether it be training, whether it would be career fair, whether it be some sort of funding that can help offset mortgage rate, I mean, whatever that we could work on, and that's what we're going to discuss on Friday at noon. And again, I hate to say that I use the word "meeting," I'd rather say "task force," because when you have a task force, it's a short period of time, everyone has to get together and solve the problem. And that's what we're trying to do, and I really appreciate my colleagues for working with me on that. And also, we have one more task force, and this is why we've been so busy, which is tomorrow, and we're going to set up, we were hoping to have it here, but we're also setting it up as a Zoom, that will be run by the Health Department, Lee Smith, and we will be working with WVU Hospital, with WVU, with Mon Health EMS, 911, Emergent Services. We want to get a clarification so the public understands exactly the process and how we will be getting out the vaccine, who will be getting the vaccine, because there's a lot of questions and concerns, and we want to get all the correct information out. So again, I thank my colleagues. We're working extra on issues that really we didn't think we'd be working on, but I do appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Sean?
Since the last meeting, last Thursday, I had my Development Authority meeting, and we had a Cares Grant call for a Cares Grant that the county is working on, talking about never resting. This is something that just came up yesterday, and we're going to submit on Thursday, so it's a Herculean effort. So I appreciate our staff and everybody that's helping on that. Monday, today, this week, I forgot what day it was for a second, we had another Cares Grant call, and then I had, we had an initial meeting with the Community Leaders Task Force. Yesterday, I had my monthly breakfast meeting with Board of Education member Ron Lidle, Delegate Statler, and former Superintendent D'Vana. We have a monthly meeting, where we just get together, and generally, usually don't talk about anything, anything important, except for where we're at and where we're at in our lives. Today, we have a regular day. We had our call with Green County this morning, and then this afternoon, I have my Morgantown Area Partnership Board meeting. Tomorrow, I have Mylan Park Board meeting, Red Team meeting, and we have that COVID response meeting that Commissioner Bloom's talking about. Friday, we have staff reports, task force call, Al Kizner's retirement party, get together, and I hope to at least be able to virtually wave and, or stop by to see Al. And then we have our broadband initiative call in the afternoon. And I thank you, Eric, for showing up to talk about the, to one, represent the Morgantown Area Partnership, but important now, I put a face to a name with the county's broadband initiative. Eric, as Vice President of the Morgantown Area Partnership, has agreed to help me shepherd this effort, so he's kind of, he's the one that's kind of keeping me on task, keeping the group on task for our weekly calls. Delegate Statler, Eric's the one that I had you invite, or had invite you to the call on Friday, and we're making some progress. Even just in our discussions, is forcing ISPs to take notice and, you know, start moving towards improvements in some areas. With the tower that we're putting up in Daybrook, we've already been contacted by, I believe, two entities wanting to put microwaves on for broadband. So there's a lot of interest. What we're trying to do is, and Eric, I appreciate all of his help, is we're going to get to a point where we have a comprehensive plan. We don't, you know, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. What we're trying to do is be cohesive about it and comprehensive about it, and figure out where we need to go and how we want to get there, and then task that off and start moving. But Delegate Statler, it's very important that we address the underserved areas, or no-served areas of this county. Just like we talked, I have a citizen that lives in the eastern part of the county in Cheat Lake, that participates in these calls, very knowledgeable, and again, you know, we want progress, and we want it as soon as possible. It's a very convoluted subject, because everybody, you know, it's a buzzword everyone wants to talk about. We want to, we want to show action, so we're moving to that regard, and it may take us a couple weeks or months to kind of get to the point where we have a cohesive plan, but initiating that plan will go a lot quicker if we do it in a comprehensive manner and an organized manner. So that's what we're trying to do. So Eric, thank you. Nobody knew who you were, so I didn't, except for the masks, they can't tell, but I'm glad now they, everybody knows who you are. Tom, I did get a happy birthday for you. My brother watches these meetings in Weirton.
Oh.
And he said, "Tell Commissioner Bloom happy birthday." Tom's birthday was last week, so I wanted to make sure that I pass that on to you.
Appreciate that.
I, in regards to the Mylan issue, yes, I mean, it's not always, it's not always good news, but even with the bad news, we try to attack it and try to get involved where we can. We don't have a lot of power, but we do have a lot of power to bring people together. So that's what we're going to do, we're going to continue to do for any of these issues, because we're aware of there's, could be other issues in the county. We're also aware of other issues where there's economic development, so we never really take our foot off the gas pedal and try to make sure that we're moving forward. So I really appreciate the effort of my colleagues, especially through this whole Longview process. Believe me, if it wasn't for the three of us having different views and really kind of pushing to where we needed to be, and Steve, thank you to you and all of your staff, everything you've done, even in regards to your current operations, when you've said you've done something, we trust but verify, and we have verified, and you've been a good community partner. You know, your employees, you guys live here, your community members, just like the rest of us, and you want what's best for this county, so really appreciate all the work. You know, tell Phil thank you, Phil Pompeley. I know your former boss is kind of semi-retired, but thank him for all of his help, and I look forward to continuing this relationship.
Thank you.
The perils of speaking last, in that one doesn't need to repeat all that has gone on before. First of all, thank you, Mark. I appreciate your kind words, I really do. It's been a pleasure. It's been a pleasure working with you and your staff. I did have a Planning Commission meeting, which we attended virtually last Wednesday. And I think Sean put a final touch on his words. When he first started here, I was wondering if he was ever going to talk. Now, I know that he has become an eloquent speaker. And what he said is what we have done for the course of the term that I've been here, we have brought people together. And in that, I would then ask for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second. We are adjourned.